Okay, good.
So I'll just pay. Just want to let you know that. Okay, reports, we don't have any first names on that. Okay. I'm like, why the hell is he in? Happens in the Tokyo and airport in the county. I was like, because I was flying down. It's really close.
Wonderful. How many newbies do we have?
Uh, just one, it was two Leanne for Jupiter.
Wonderful.
And the caveat to that is my son graduated.
Where's he going?
He works in candy.
Awesome.
Doing things like.
Apple does apple tree.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, just in case. Thank you.
Yeah, you have to buy coffee.
No, you don't have any money. You go take the picture.
All right.
It's good to be here. Madam Clerk, are we ready?
Yes.
Good morning. It is February twentieth, twenty twenty four at nine AM. And I call this meeting of the Board of Bonner County Commissioners to order. For the record, I am Chairman Luke Omat and Commissioners Asia Williams and Steve Bradshaw are also present. Please rise for the invocation from Pastor Dan Lawrence.
Our Father, we thank you for a new day and for a new sense of purpose and for new guidance and direction by your Holy Spirit. We pray that you'll let this room be filled with your peace and your presence. In spite of our own individual understandings, Lord, let us be brought together in you. We praise you. We thank you. We thank you for Bonner County and for all who serve in Bonner County, and we give you great praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the board meeting by the chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain, under any circumstances, comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, or elected official or member of the public. Our first order of business today is to adopt the Order of Agenda.
Let's adopt the Order of Agenda.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Our next order on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Based on information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. The next three items on our agenda were continued from last week's meeting. And our first, and I am going to read the expenditures for five K right before the clerk comes up. But our first, uh, you know.
Go ahead, Jason.
Jason, Jason, you're up, sir. Our first agendas item is Roden Bridge with Mr. Jason Top.
All the attention.
Well, I'm glad you do, and I'm glad to see you.
All right, I got four items, but it looks like I'm just doing the two first, and I'll do the other two at the end of the meeting.
Hold on. If there are no uh, problems from the board, we've got Mr. Top up here for the efficiency. Is there any problem with having Director Top go through his four agendas item, one, two, three, four, board members?
I don't have an issue.
I got no issues.
So if that's all right with you, Director, uh, we have roads to maintain, so I'd like you to be efficient and let's do our stuff.
All right, our first one is for an MOU for Providence Road. Wait a moment, exempted. So Lippert Excavation has asked for consideration of an MOU of Bonner Danny Roden Bridge to be able to haul on Providence Road extending from Highway two hundred to the Providence subdivision entrance. Providence Road is currently a gravel road and is part of the Providence subdividing conditions. At approval, the developer and their contractor, Lippert Excavation, will be completely reconstructed in this road, including base rock, layers, ditches, and pavement with an asphalt service, all in twenty twenty four. Roden Bridge is in a favor. We are in a, in favor of this agreement. As if damage to the road is inconsequential in the light coming recon, area in light of the decoming reconstruction that they're doing, Lippert will be taking the maintenance responsibilities during the spring break up to ensure the road remains possible, including placing new gravel as necessary due to mud. Lippert and the developer will bond for all the work proposed in the subdivision improvements or fifty thousand minimum performance bond for repairs to the road.
I move to approve this memorandum of understanding between Lippert Excavation, Bonner County Roden Bridge to allow hauling by Lippert on Providence Road.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion amongst the board on the motion that is on the floor?
Jason, was this reviewed by legal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Yeah, item number two is going to need a, an amendment to the motion. Or states WH Pacific that needs to say NV five. So Daniel Victor five. This one's for the professional service agreement for the engineer of record for Rapid Lightning Bridge number five. In two thousand sixteen, Bonner County was awarded a federal aid grant to replace Rapid Lightning Bridge number five. In two thousand eighteen, Bonner County signed the local state agreement to move the project forward. On October eighth, two thousand nineteen, Bonner County and LTAC awarded the design of the bridge to WH Pacific, which is now doing business as NV five.
I move to approve this professional service agreement with LTAC and NV five for engineer of record services for the Rapid Lightning Bridge number five and to allow the board to sign the agreement.
I would say that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Ma'am.
The motion carries.
All right, item number three. So this is an LTAC and local agreement for leading out a local bridge program for East Shore Road Bridge at Hunt Creek. On March sixteenth, twenty twenty two, Governor Little signed a bill thirteen fifty nine as funding for the local transportation in Idaho. The bill provided up to two hundred million for repairs and replacements of local bridges and additional buddies were later obligated to the program as well. Bonner County submitted applications for five bridges to be considered, and all five of the bridges have been selected for funding of replacements. The local highway technical assistance council will administer the bridge funds through the leading Idaho local bridge program. This program is from state funds and does not require any match by Bonner County. Attached is the LTAC and local agreement. Except for Bonner County signatures pertaining to the last five bridges. East Shore Road at Hunt Creek, the other four bridges were already taken up under previous agreements. This current agreement will confirm that Bonner County wishes to move forward with the LTAC replacing the East Shore Road Bridge at Hunt Creek under the little D program.
So am I to understand correctly? The state is replacing five bridges at no cost to Bonner County.
Yes.
Well, other were members of the state. Well done.
Yeah, that's a big use.
I think that's fantastic.
Twenty one point four million dollars worth of bridges.
I move the board commissioners approved LTAC and local agreement, leading Idaho Bridge Program, Bridge number KN three zero two four five to replace the East Shore Road Bridge at Hunt Creek.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Sir.
All right, the last one is a contract extension for liquid asphalt contract for twenty twenty four. This contract for twenty twenty two liquid asphalt was awarded to Ergon Asphalt and Emotions in April of twenty twenty two. After a competitive bid proposal of selection process as outlined in Idaho Code sixty seven dash twenty eight oh six eight, request for proposals. This contract allows up to four one-year extensions. Both parties agree, five years in total. Because of the amount and effort required in selecting the vendor under the bid proposal process, the contract further dictates that the extensions will have a unit price adjustment based on the Idaho Transportation Department Asphalt Index and that the contract can be extended via change order. The contract was extended in twenty twenty three under a change order number one. Ergon has provided the offer letter to extend the contract for another year for twenty four season and have prepared the attached change order to reflect the update, unit prices anticipated to cause based upon the number of tons needed for the twenty twenty four chip seal season. I recommend accepting the offer and extending the contract as revised for twenty twenty four. Fundings will come from zero zero two eighty five ten B S T surfacing chip seal, which has remaining balance of nine hundred and fifty thousand. This agreement tolls nine hundred and thirty one thousand seven sixty five nineteen.
Based upon the information before, so move to approve change order number two for the two thousand and twenty two liquid asphalt contract extending the contract for two thousand and twenty four at the revised unit prices as shown for a total contract increase of nine hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars and nineteen cents. This extension was approved by legal.
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Top.
Mr. Moore, I will get to it when Mr. Rosell comes up. And the next item on our agenda is Justice Services.
Good morning. I just have one quick item this morning. We're looking to replace our older worn-out um, transport vehicle for juvenile detention. So I'm recommending that the board approve the purchase of a twenty twenty four Chevy Equinox from Taylor and Son Chevrolet for the sum of twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars. For use by the juvenile detention staff and transportation of persons housed in juvenile detention in Bonner County, Idaho, and the day-to-day business of Justice Services Department. Payment for the reference vehicle will be made from lottery tax money, so this does not have any direct impact on a local tax dollars. This is only impacts those that play and win the lottery in the state of Idaho, so.
Excellent.
That's what we, that's what I have before you today.
Does it impact those of us who play and lose the lottery?
Not so much, no. I think it's just a tax that they pay when they win. And as I always say, I'll volunteer to pay my taxes on that, should I, should I win.
I've tried. I'm in the latter half. All right.
All right. I move to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty four Chevy Equinox from Taylor and Son Chevrolet, Ponderay, Idaho, for the sum of twenty eight thousand, seven hundred, fifty seven dollars for use by juvenile detention staff in transportation of persons housed in juvenile detention in Bonner County. And the day-to-day business of the Justice Services Department, payment for the reference vehicle will be made from lottery tax money.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners?
No, just to thank you to everybody that bought a ticket.
You're welcome.
That'll bring that level up.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Our next agendas item is Human Resources with Director Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alicia Clark, HR Director for the record. Um, HR, Bonner County HR is requesting approval to create a part-time Marine Division Maintenance Supervisor. Um, it won't increase uh, any overhead. It's just a new job description.
And for members of the public, this is, this is not a new position, correct?
Correct.
So this is, this is existing staff that we are just realigning to better suit the needs of Bonner County.
Correct.
Is that a correct reflection?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Is there a motion?
Based on the information before, so move to approve commencing with approval of the new job description for Marine Division Maintenance Supervisor. So Marine Department effective February. What is today, twenty, two thousand twenty four?
Seconded.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Our next agendas item is with the Office of the Clerk. And before I begin, Mr. Moore, the expenditures over five K for last week's meeting, there's a confidential item from the sheriff. It's a that there will be an expenditure for, but it's confidential. Uh, item two is an annual maintenance fee with some software for twenty one thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars. The third item was from East Bonner Snowmobile, which was the replacement of unsafe tires for a haul trailer for five thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, twenty eight cents. The expenditures for today over five thousand dollars is with HR risk, the repair of the prosecutor's office from the flooding that occurred on uh, one fourteen twenty four during that cold spell. We had some pipes burst. That was fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars with Onyx Construction. The second item is also the repair of the prosecutor's office from the same uh, event. And that was with North Idaho Flood and Fire for fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars, twenty five cents. The third item is a Roden Bridge claim for the replacement bed of a timberline truck and trailer of eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Item four is the emergency repairs to East Spring Creek Road of fifty nine thousand, four hundred and fifty seven dollars, sixty six cents that was undertaken by woods crushing and hauling. Mr. Rosell, nice to see you.
Thank you. Welcome back. Uh, before you, I have claims batch number ten and the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty six cents. And a huge demand batch in the number ten in the amount of six hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy seven cents totaling one million, seven hundred and eighty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty three cents. The demand, the big items on the demands are workman's comp for a hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, we have Roden Bridge for thirty four thousand. We have almost a hundred thousand for the Boyer Road relocation, thirty thousand for lockbox fees for the treasure, hundred and twenty four thousand for Tyler, um, hundred and eighty eight thousand for medical. That's those are the big ones. For your approval.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I move to approve payment of the FY twenty four claims and demands in batch number ten totaling one million, seven hundred and eighty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and sixty three cents.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, I have EMS batch number ten in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and fifty cents. And demand batch number ten in the amount of thirty two thousand, five hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy seven cents totaling three hundred and forty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty seven cents for approval. And the claim on the EMS demands that's significant is workman's comp for twenty five thousand, three hundred.
I move to approve payment of the FY twenty four EMS claims and demands in batch number ten totaling three hundred and forty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty seven cents.
Seconded that.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rosell. Our next agendas item is with Emergency Management and Mr. Nick Zoller, who is not Director Bob Howard.
Morning, Nick Zoller, Fire Mitigation Program Manager for the record. Today I have two items. Item number one um, is a memorandum of understanding between Bonner County and the Idaho Department of Lands is for a grand award in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for hazardous fuels treatment associated with the bonfire program. The funds identified will be used for the twenty two J C Bonner Scattered Lands Phase Four Project. No cost shares associated with this grant.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county approve the memorandum of understanding, grant number two two J C Bonner in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and allow the chair to sign.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
I'll just note that it was approved by legal.
Yes.
It was approved by.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, hearing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Item number two um, is the attached contract is between Bonner County and Taylor and Son Construction to provide project work for the treatment and or removal of hazardous wildland fuels at locations in compliance with the bonfire program. There will be no county match. This contract will be funded from an IDL Department of Lands Grant. I would recommend the Board of County Commissioners accept and sign the contract for professional services between Bonner County and Taylor and Son Construction.
I just want to note that I greatly appreciate when you come before us and there's no county match, so I hope that you continue that.
That's a good part.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's very efficient.
Is this one of the ones that uh, legal would take a look at?
He approved this contract from the very beginning, so he doesn't approve each individual one.
Okay, thank you. Based on the information before us, we move to approve and sign the contract for hazardous fuels treatment between Bonner County and Taylor and Sons Construction for project work on the bonfire program funded by Idaho Department of Lands Grant with no county match.
Is there a second?
There is. I second.
God bless America. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
Perfect.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, sir. Our next agendas item today is with Mr. Pete Hughes of our Rec Department. Pete? Did I miss it?
We lose Pete. You want to be Pete then?
I'll read it on his behalf then.
Please.
Modification of Grant or Agreement, the United States Forest Service has sent the attached request to modify challenge cost share agreement two two C S one one zero one zero four zero 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 seven. The CCS agreement was signed on twelve, seven, two thousand twenty one and does not expire until nine thirty, two thousand twenty six. Modifications include changing all language referring to the annual operating plan to operating plan. Also included are the updated principal contacts. Legal has reviewed and approved this change.
Based on the information before us, I move to accept and sign the U S Forestry Service notification of grant or agreement.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omat?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Our next agendas item is with planning and. Yes. And Mr. Alex Fan.
There we are. I got ahead of myself. Slow down. That Roden Bridge being checked off threw me off. There he is.
Thank you, Commissioners. Alex Fan, playing staff for the record. Um, today I have a final plat for a subdivision, uh, file number S zero 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 three dash two two for foyer, fourth and fifth additions. This is a subdivision dividing two unplatted parcels totaling approximately eighty acres into sixteen five acre residential lots. Parcels are zoned rule five and meet the requirements of that zone. The parcels are served by individual wells, individual septic systems and inland power. Parcels are accessed off Hunter Road, a Bonner County owned and maintained public right of way, Cannon Lane and Wallace Lane, both of which are privately owned and maintained roads. The preliminary plots were approved by the Bonner County Commissioners on September seventh, two thousand twenty two. Parcels are located in a portion of sections sixteen and seventeen, Township fifty four north, range five west, Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho. The conditions of approval for S zero 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 three dash two two Poyet fourth and fifth addition have been completed. And notes and easements required by plat approval are shown on the final plots.
I move to approve this project file S as in SAM zero 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 three dash two two Poyet fourth and fifth addition. And authorize the chair to sign the final plots as presented.
I second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omart?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next agendized item is with assistance and Ms. Schultz.
Morning. The Bonner County Indigent Assistance Office is seeking approval to destroy records as outlined in the Indigent Office Records Retention. And Destruction Policy Resolution eighteen dash fourteen. This has been approved by legal.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move make motion to approve Resolution two four dash one seven. For the approval of the destruction of Indigent Assistance Office records.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Terry. Oh.
I'm here again.
Ms. Schultz.
So similar, um, similar thing for elections. The Bonner County Elections Office is seeking approval to destroy election records in storage longer than the Idaho State mandated records retention period. As per Idaho Statute thirty four dash two seventeen, this has also been approved by legal.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash one eight. It allows Elections Office to dispose of the election records listed above.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you. Our next agendized item is the airport. Dave, are you out there?
I'll go ahead and read his. Uh, grant application to the FAA bill funding program is in the amount of three hundred and seventy three thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars. Will construct an approximate five hundred foot long by twenty five foot wide hangar taxi line for aircraft storage. It will also expand an aircraft parking apron by a hundred and forty feet to accommodate one additional tie down space at the Priest River Airport. The construction of this taxi line will allow a space for hangar development of four additional conventional hangars. And one T hangar site with access out of the west. The airport is experiencing significant growth and all of the vacant hangar lots are leased for hangar development. Other benefits include adding one aircraft tie down location by expanding the existing tie down apron to the north. Artura designed this project as part of AIP zero one five. Artura will assist with bid review, contracting and construction observation. Work includes clearing and grubbing, excavation and embankment, base course, asphalt pavement tie downs. Anchors, pavements, marking, drainage and safety area, grading, topsoiling, seating, traffic control, access, road and fence modification. There is, this was reviewed by legal and it is recommended to apply for the grant.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County submit this grant application to the FAA.
Second item, two thousand twenty four FAA. I'm sorry, we didn't.
I will step down from the chair and second the motion. Is there any discussion on this agendized item? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
Second item.
Excuse me.
Oh, Dave, you're out there.
I am. Apologize for being late to the meeting. And thank you, Commissioner Williams, for handling my first item.
No worries. Back to you.
Thank you. Item number two. Uh, this is an FAA B I L grant application for taxi lane and apron construction at Priest River Airport. Very similar to the one that was just read by Commissioner Williams. However, this is a slightly different funding mechanism. It is not the AIP program. It's the B I L program. Uh, everything else is the same. The description's the same. The dollar value is slightly different. But it totals to an amount that's about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the entire project.
Dave, you said it's not AIP, but it's B I L because the paper says AIP.
Um, the, uh, number one, it should be AIP.
So the first one that I read was B I L. The second one says AIP.
If I can take a moment, the first one we was, was airport item number two. Dave, if I could get you to start with airport item number one, and then we will skip to number three, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm slightly confused. Yes, Commissioner Williams, you're correct. Item number two is B I L funding. Same project at Priest River, all the same detail that you read. The second or the item number one is AIP funding. We didn't have enough money in the AIP uh funding for this project, so we had to go with two different elements for this. Same description, two different grant applications.
Thank you. My, my papers are out of order. Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County submit this grant application to the FAA.
I second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
So we will now skip to item number three after that motion has carried.
Thank you. This is the season for grant applications for the uh airports. So item number three is another grant application. This is with the FAA AIP program. And this application is for the airport's geographic information system survey at Priest River Airport in support of updating the airport layout plan. This grant application to the FAA AIP program is in the amount of three hundred and eighty seven thousand two hundred and forty six dollars. And will allow us to update the ALP Airport Layout Plan, which is needed prior to the FAA funding for improving the runway at Priest River. The Aegis Survey will identify obstructions surrounding the airport and enable a threshold sighting analysis based on those obstructions. Updating the ALP will identify non-standard conditions to create a safer airport for the flying public. The FAA AIP program is funded solely through airport user fees in the form of passenger fees. On airline tickets and taxes on aviation fuels. I recommend applying for this grant.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County submit this grant application to the FAA.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
None.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Item number four, sir.
Thank you. This is the work order twenty four dash zero zero one for the Priest River Airport Taxi Lane and Apron Bidding and Construction Administration Services. For the FAA AIP grant for the taxi lane and apron design at Priest River Airport. That's the grant we just applied for or we just approved applying for. This work order will be attached to and made part of and incorporated by reference into the master's professional services agreement between Bonner County. And Artura Group dated July twelfth, two thousand twenty three. Professional service of services to be provided shall include contract administration, bid and prebid meeting, bid review. Contract documents, construction administration, construction observation, quality assurance testing. Final completion inspection, grant administration, grant application preparation, final report preparation. Grant closeout coordination, quarterly reporting, annual reporting, DBE reporting. And owner FAA coordination. I recommend entering into this engineering services agreement.
Based on the information before us, I move that we enter into this engineering service agreement in support of recent grant application and that the chairman signed administratively. Legal did approve this.
I would second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Sir.
Item number five. This is a request to go out for a bid for the construction of the apron and taxi lane C at Priest River Airport. Uh, which would be the Priest River, uh, I'm sorry, FAA IP three dash sixteen dash zero zero five eight dash fifteen dash zero two zero two two. The project consists of, but is not limited to, construction of a taxi lane, aircraft parking apron and gravel vehicle roads. To include clearing and grubbing, excavation, embankment, base course, sublease, subbase course. Drainage improvements, bituminous pavement, pavement markings, topsoil, seeding, fencing, tie down anchors and other miscellaneous items. The estimated cost of this project is eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, ninety five percent of this will be reimbursed by the FAA AIP. Grant applied for earlier today.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to go out for bid for this project.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Sir.
Item number six. This is a transfer of non-primary primary entitlement funds, which is, uh, are given to us every year to both airports. Every year by the FAA from Sandpoint Airport to Priest River Airport to support the taxi lane and apron construction project. This transfer of two hundred and sixty three thousand seven hundred and sixty NPE funds. Available from fiscal year twenty twenty one, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and fiscal year twenty twenty two, a hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. Will help fund a taxi lane and apron expansion at Priest River Airport. I recommend requesting this transfer.
That was not in my packet, so I will abstain.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County submit this funds transfer request to the FAA. And the chairman sign administratively.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Abstain. This item was not in my packet.
Mr. Omart?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Uh, and here's the one we've been looking for, item number seven. This is an FAA B I L grant application for land and easement acquisition at Sandpoint Airport. This grant application to the FAA is in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in order to acquire land and navigation easements. Recommended by the current master plan update to protect the runway to approach surface and the runway protection zone. Acquisitions will consist of fee simple land acquisitions and navigation easements. These acquisitions are in support of our continuing efforts to improve safety around our airports. I recommend applying for this grant.
Based on the information before us, I move that Bonner County submit this grant application to the FAA.
Second it.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omart?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Our next agendized item is from the B O C C, and I will read into the record. This is a request from the Coolin Civic Organization. For the twenty twenty four annual Priest Lake Spring Festival. The Commissioners received a letter dated January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. From the Coolin Civic Organization requesting permission to conduct a parade on May twenty fifth. In conjunction with the annual Priest Lake Spring Festival. The Spring Festival is managed by the Coolin Civic Organization. And the festival includes a parade, craft fair, quilt display, bake sale and run events, which draws approximately two thousand local residents and tourists to the area. The Coolin Civic Organization is also requesting permission for road closures and the assistance of at least two Bonner County Sheriff Officers to help with traffic and crowd control. The intersection of Kavanaugh Road, Kavanaugh Bay Road at Missouri Street. The intersection of Kavanaugh Bay Road and Dickinson Sheet Roads. The intersection of Dickinson Sheet Road and St. Louis Avenue on the parade return route. The Coolin Civic Organization will work directly with the Sheriff's Office to assure a unified effort to control traffic and maintain safety. If approved by the Bonner County Commissioners, the Coolin Civic Organization will correspond with the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department for permitting purposes. I will step down from the chair and move to approve the letter to the Coolin Civic Organization. Granting them permission to hold a parade on May. Twenty seventh, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, in conjunction with the annual Priest Lake Spring Festival.
Second that.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Was the Sheriff's Office and EMS um consulted and approved that they could do this on May twenty fifth?
It is my understanding that this is an annual event, and this is the first step. Before, they want to get permission from the board before reaching out to the Sheriff and EMS. But this is an annual event that has been occurring for years.
This is the first step in it.
Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
No.
Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Omart?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. Our next agendized item is with Commissioner Williams.
So I put the item of public comment on the agenda last week. Public comment was removed. Public comment, uh, we've been advised by legal if Bonner County does not want to give, have a public comment section. It needs to amend the ordinance. The ordinance, ordinance one two hundred subsection B identifies what public comment is for. And then there's a structure in place by which the chair moderates that public comment. We can't arbitrarily remove public comment because someone's not here or we don't like what the people are going to say. We've then, when we do that, we're removing the right of the people to address Bonner County um as a board. A full board to be able to provide. Whether or not you guys want something on the agenda or to get things clarified in real time. This is not, we've gone back, the law, the state law doesn't require public comment in our business meeting, but we required it by writing this ordinance. So unless and until public comment is removed, uh, fro- out of the actual ordinance. Bonner County needs to continue public comment um without obstruction to the community so that they can address their local government. And so um my motion is uh based on the above information, I move that the Board of County Commissioners. Restore public comment during Tuesday's business meeting in compliance with our ordinance two hundred. I would add that we not arbitrarily remove it um either because that then is violating our own ordinance, which uh we did. Not only just violate, we didn't conduct our county business because there was a requirement to remove public comment from the agenda.
I will step down from the chair and second the motion. I will then step down from the chair and make a motion to amend that. The Board of County Commissioners holds a meeting with all elected officials for public comment. Is there a second to my amendment?
Yes, there is.
There is a motion and a sec for the amendment? Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I don't understand what you said. Are you, are you saying that you want to hold, it's a specific meeting just for public comment?
That is correct. That is the amendment that is on the floor with a second, Commissioner.
That's not really an amendment. That's a whole new memorandum. My, my actual motion is addressing the ordinance itself. And so you're just adding a different item onto the agenda to say do public comment, which I'm not opposed to. But my, my issue has to do with this particular business meeting. Her ordinance allows for public comment, and we need to stop removing it. People come to this meeting to give public comment during this setting on purpose. It was arbitrarily removed multiple times throughout uh this particular board. to give public comment during this setting on purpose. It was arbitrarily removed multiple times throughout, uh, this particular board, but I'm trying to draw your attention to the ordinance itself. So, that's, you didn't amend my motion, you just changed it and added something.
That, that's what an amendment is. Uh, is there any further discussion?
You changed, you changed the foundation of what my motion was. So I am asking for it to maintain in this business meeting. You're asking for a particular section just for particular meeting for a public comment. I'm talking about this business meeting. It's not, you're not amending it. You're just giving a different memo, which you didn't submit, which is in line with what you said you need to do in order to have something on the agenda. You're asking just to have another meeting.
Did you?
Yeah.
Or excuse me.
And Bill, you can, you can chime in and tell me if I'm wrong or not, but state statute requires public comment on planning hearings and meetings of that nature. Uh, when it comes to county business meeting, there is no requirement for public comment. It is at the discretion of the chairman of the board at that time. Is this correct?
Well, Steve, the, you're talking about the state statute. That's correct. It doesn't require it. Um, if you read our local ordinance, though, it does speak to a public comment. Um, you know, there does language in that addressing public comment, and so I think that, you know, the, the setup we have now allowing that at the end of the meeting is, is probably in keeping with that. I would note also, for those of you following the legislative session, that there is currently a bill before the, uh, the, the Idaho Legislature that would require, um, at least two minutes of public comment per speaker at ordinary business meetings. So this might quickly become a moot point if the state statute changes to require this. Um, and it would probably line up then with our local ordinance.
So are we required to follow laws that might be passed or the ones that have been passed?
Well, I think you know the answer to that.
I think I do too, and I believe in the policy. It also says at the discretion of the chair, does it not?
It does.
But can I ask clarification here? Because I think you can't use part of the ordinance to refute the part about public comment because the fact that there is a structure in the ordinance is because there is public comment. And so what Mr. Wilson stated was you are referencing state, but once you raise the bar through your.
Reference the policy to.
Excuse me. The ordinance specifically allows for public comment, and in order for.
Discretion of the chair.
No, actually, it doesn't. And I would like to finish what I'm saying.
Commissioners, hold on, hold on. The amendment on the floor. The amendment on the floor. Let's get back to the actual amendment on the floor. The amendment on the floor is to hold a meeting of all elected officials. We are not discussing public comment. We have a motion that is seconded. It is on the floor. So let's address the motion and the second that is on the floor as is appropriate. So is there any further discussion?
There is, because you're conflating an issue. There was a first and a second to my motion, and I'm discussing my motion. You made a, an amendment to the motion, but we are still.
Which was seconded.
Except that Commissioner Bradshaw started discussing the motion that I put forward with clarification from legal. And so I am responding to what Mr. Wilson reported because he said there is a distinction between state and what our ordinance says. Our ordinance provides for public comment. That is, that is a significant error in understanding. Because it provides for public comment, it is not appropriate for us to remove public comment from the business meeting unless we have the ordinance.
Commissioner Williams, I'm going to step in to bring forth that what we are being, preparing to vote for is the amendment, which is to hold a meeting of all elected officials. Which, that's the amendment. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing.
What is the frequency of your meeting and when is it going to be had, if you're going to vote on having a public comment meeting?
That would be determined.
That will be determined. Let's see if, which people will show up.
Well, no, I don't.
Hearing no further discussion.
I actually am having a discussion.
Roll call vote.
I am having a discussion.
Call the vote, please.
It doesn't make sense with what you're doing. This isn't, doesn't, you're actually pushing us towards something.
Madam Clerk, please proceed with the vote.
Conversation. You're not providing the structure for what you're proposing. I'm just asking you to provide the structure for proposing.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion carries. We will now vote on their, the amendment to the main mo-. The main motion has been amended. We will now vote on the main motion. Is there any discussion?
Bill Wilson has given a legal opinion that the ordinance for Bonner County provides for public comment in our regular business meeting. So my request is that this board discontinue removing it unless and until public comment is removed from the ordinance. Otherwise, we are in violation of the ordinance that we put forth.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next agendized item after this is public comment, which I believe proves to a certain degree that this is moot.
It actually doesn't. So why did you remove it from last week? It doesn't. The community should come. The reason, the reason that, the reason that I put it on the agenda is because the public comes to this meeting with an expectation to give public comment. But the way in which the two of you have treated public comment is they don't know whether or not they're going to speak or not. And so because of that, I put it on the agenda so that there's a point in reference of time where that behavior is going to stop. It was already off the agenda last week. There was no discussion. There was no, there was people that came here to talk to the Board of County Commissioners, and they were denied that right arbitrarily by the Board. And so because of the actions of this board, it is reasonable to.
Of which you are a member.
Which is why I'm fighting for the public comment. You're right. That's why I am a member. And so that's what I am doing. So if you agree that public comment is here, you agree that it should be here, then we shouldn't, this shouldn't even be an argument. You just say, okay, public comment is in the ordinance unless and until it changes, we'll have public comment in the business meeting all the time, not when it's convenient for an individual commissioner. The public deserves their time.
A- and they're going to get it. And state law says the chairman will preside, and the business meeting is for the business of Bonner County. In our ordinance, which is often neglected, is what the business of Bonner County is. And it is in our ordinance. And it has created challenges, and I have brought forward to Mr. Wilson a suggested change, and he responded. Now that I have returned, I will be scheduling a workshop so we can look at that. Because the business of Bonner County, regardless of how ugly the sausage being made may look, has and will continue to be accomplished. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
But because, because you're trying to change the ordinance, doesn't mean that you arbitrarily suspend the right of the public. Be, so when you're saying you're working with Bill to change the ordinance, that's fine. But it's actually a point of recognition that something needs to change for you to stifle public comment. You can't have, you cannot ignore subsection B in the ordinance that Bonner County wrote. So I'm just saying, until it is actually changed, public comment should always be on our agenda. It was arbitrarily removed. Maybe it was removed because you weren't here and you didn't want Commissioner Bradshaw to be in charge of public comment. I don't know, but it's not fair to the public, and it is actually a violation of our own ordinance. So I'm asking for the board to get in compliance with the ordinance that is in place and stop removing it unless and until there's a different rule that these community members can rely and depend upon. That's, that's actually very reasonable. Bill Wilson just told you, our ordinance tells us to. We have raised the bar in Bonner County beyond what the state statute says, and we're heading that direction anyhow, most likely. So this shouldn't be contentious. It should be fine. It is there, and when it's, when we take it out, then it's not there. So just agree to it so that the community can hear it. Public comment is very clearly identified.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Omot?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
No.
Well, it was on the amended motion.
Oh, amended, we are voted on.
Well, we voted for the, no, the main motion was amended. The motion carries.
No.
Yes, that's the way math works. If two people vote yes, which you just did, and I voted yes, one plus one is two. The motion carries. It is passed.
For the conduct that you keep spouting about the business meeting, the way in which you're interacting is grossly inappropriate. And I'm asking for a point of clarification. I thought we already voted on your amendment of the motion, and then we were on the original motion. And so, please stop. I'm going to ask the clerk to clarify because I believe that that is what already happened. If we got it wrong, I would like to fix it in real time. I am being very patient with your demeanor, but everybody's just sitting here. So why inject negativity and disrespect?
I'm, I'm not injecting negativity.
You are.
Commissioner Williams, I would like to proceed.
No, you're not gonna, you're not going to.
It's nine fifty-seven.
Are you serious?
And I'm gonna, am I, I'm not gonna pee my pants here for you. I'm gonna use the latrine like a, like a civilized human being. So it's nine fifty-seven and, well, five minute recess. And then we're gonna come back and we're gonna do.
Just for clarity, we approved the amendment.
We approved the amendment to the main motion. So now you are voting on an amended motion, which was to have.
Yeah, we'd already done that.
We approved the amendment. So then that now became the main motion.
Okay.
Then you vote on that again, which carried. We just had a little bit of inverse there with the math. So what we have voted upon and what was passed is to hold a meeting with all elected officials, which increases the opportunity of the general public to be able to ask all of their elected officials some questions, which I think is great. Because I am exceedingly interested to see which of the nine elected officials are going to attend. I'll be there because the chairman must preside. With that, it's nine fifty-eight, and we will take a recess for five minutes. Absolutely. Come back. So maybe you can re-vote. It has passed.
Your bills.
Just so that we don't have the situation that happened before, so that we can face, so that anyone right away.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I can get you to take your seat so we can proceed with this meeting and get into the public comment section. Thank you. It is ten oh three, and we are returning from a recess, and our next agendized item is the public comment section of the Board of County Commissioners. Our first.
Point of order. So, we didn't vote on my motion?
Commissioner Williams, we did vote, but we are going to proceed with the agendized item, which is public comment. So our first speaker is Ms. Jennifer Kramer.
Good morning, Jennifer Kramer. I live in Bonner County. So, um, my comments are regarding public comments, ironically enough. And I guess, um, just to the discussion this morning in one dash two hundred, section A, the regular meeting is where it discusses discretion by the chair. It says, um, regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded, may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the chair. So that's section A. Section B, which addresses the public comment section, has nothing to do, has nothing about discretion of the chair. It simply says that what the purpose of public comment is, we won't engage in dialogue, but there's no discretion to remove it. So I wanted to bring that clarity. And then, um, the three of you have been elected to represent, or were elected to represent the people. And so it's impossible for you to represent the people if you refuse to hear our points of view or our, refuse our input. So I don't see how you can possibly represent us. Um, and then also, I guess I have a question. Since the ordinance states there will be public comments, wondering when ordinances or compliance to ordinances has become arbitrary. Um, Luke, you state often that you will follow laws. I still have a minute left. That you, um, are, um, it's important to you to follow laws and abide by the laws. So if the ordinance states that we should have public comment, then it's important to follow that. Um, and then to your, to your motion, I'm not sure if it passed or not because it got very confusing. But to your motion about having a meeting with all the department heads, and at that meeting, we could have public comment. I had the same question Asia did, as what is the frequency? Is that an annual meeting and that satisfies that, um, suggestion of yours? And then also from a budgetary or cost impact, having all the department heads in a special meeting so that they can hear us, the point is for the three of you to hear us because you are the ones that vote and make the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next.
I'm gonna pause you here. I didn't want to interrupt Ms. Kramer. I have two items on the list. My second item addresses the upcoming events. So if you're gonna, not, if you're moving on, it has to go to my number two.
Oh, that's a dis- the discussion for upcoming events?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize. Let's finish our. I stand corrected. Please proceed, and then we'll continue with public comment.
Yeah.
What am I looking at?
So, uh, April twentieth is going to be a town hall for Spirit Valley Precinct. I want to encourage everybody, it's an opportunity for us to have a discussion with elected officials, um, to bring.
Excuse me, Commissioner Williams, this is not an opportunity for you to have your commissioner chat. This will not proceed. I have made clear. So this is for the business items.
Actually, you act.
There is a discussion, and if there is not an action item, and it is the discretion of the chair to determine that.
At the beginning, when you adopt the order of the agenda, so you did not remove that item, and so.
Your agendized item says.
Discussion for upcoming events.
Please proceed, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I encourage everybody um, to attend. One of the things that I've heard from a lot of members of the community is you guys don't know who um, some of your elected officials are to include your precinct committee men, especially as we're moving towards a presidential caucus. So um, you can reach out, you can reach out to me and I can help navigate you to the website to identify that person. But it is actually kind of startling, the number of people that did not know that we are having a presidential caucus on March second. Um, it's not necessarily at your actual location that you typically vote. I know for um, Spirit Valley, we are going to do our caucus at our community center and not at our um, Grange, which is our typical voting area. So we have to do a good job of spreading the word on this particular issue. We can't assume who's going to be the nominee for the state of Idaho. The other thing I want to just, everybody that participated with the um, behavioral health uh, commissioner chat this morning, it was a lot of information. I do still have some of the handouts from the various groups. There are services that are coming to Bonner County. Um, the clubhouse is still needing about a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars for an E D, executive director. So if anybody has the ability, they are also looking for volunteers, please reach out um, to me directly. When we come into the month of March, our commissioner chats are going to als- also feature some of our providers in the community that want to help educate us on what is available to us. So in March, where a lot of you asked me about Bonner County and risk, Christian is our risk manager and he did agree to do an education session with the community on self-insurance, our workers' comp. How do we um, vet for insurance? So for those of you who asked for that, please make sure that um, you check the calendar. I did already post that in March. We will also um, had an opportunity for a mental health therapist agreed to come up from Hayden and have a discussion on various topics that are specific to our community. If you live in the West Bonner County area, one of the way, things that we are focused on is we have a lot of bullying, we have um, behavior issues down there in our youth. And we need to know where our resources are today. Nami was able to explain that we actually do have some resources in Priest River that some of us didn't know about. So I encourage you guys to continue to give me your ideas of who you want to see, but also um, get the information because we've got a lot more going on in Bonner County than we had anticipated with uh, respect to resources. On the third um, Tuesday in March, Idaho State Patrol is going to redo the fentanyl education. So it is a fantastic presentation, um, but also we have an increase in issues in our county. At our regional behavioral health, uh, Sheriff Wheeler asked about an opportunity for us to not just calculate the number of deaths from fentanyl, but the near misses so that we can have a better understanding of what, what is actually happening in our community itself. And so there is a process for us to start gauging that. And so um, one of the things that was mentioned today was having access to Narcan yourself. Uh, it is a huge problem within our community. It is growing in our states that surround Bonner, Bonner County and Idaho as a whole lessen their uh, restrictions on illegal drugs. It means that we have to address our, our problem more. So uh, March second, presidential caucus. There is still a primary in May for those persons that are running for election. Um, so we need to make sure we give that distinction because a lot of people are conflating those two issues together. So thank you for listening to the update of events that are going on. I will continue to post on Facebook. And I encourage people to ask these commissioners to allow me to give the information during this meeting. A lot more people tune into this meeting. A lot of people will message me and say, I didn't know you were doing that type of meeting, even on behavioral health. There were people that didn't know and it's because this meeting is not uh, allowing that communication, which is this is only about Bonner County. If you look at what we brought forward, we brought resources to Bonner County for behavioral health. We need to open every avenue for communication on our topic so that our resources can get to you, our community. Because there are so many people that have come forward for these various meetings and we didn't know they did certain things and we have services, we just have to know where they are. So that's all I have in terms of upcoming events at this time.
We will now re, thank you, Commissioner. That satisfy your agendized item?
Yes, it did.
We will now return to our public comment, Ms. Christine Logue.
Good morning, Commissioners and Christine Logue, and I live in Bonner County. First, I'd like to say that I would love to see public comment continue. There is an aspect to that that I think is almost being missed sometimes, especially when proposals are brought forth and we're talking about um, developments that are being developed on potential flood plains or the likes of that. I think that public comment should and, and, and needs to be heard and it has a place in these business meetings. Doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's going to talk for every item or every dollar that's being spent. But I think that we should give the opportunity for when a person does wish to get up and speak about something. Heck, the guy that was given the uh, M, M L D, whatever it was for in uh, down in Blanchard, he mispronounced Poyer name. It, I mean, it's most, that wouldn't have been brought forth, but what I'm saying is that somebody else might not have known that. If the public comment has its place to give information, that's not necessarily known to you, the board members. Um, on the commissioner chats, I wish that you and Steve would, would join that. It is such a wealth of information and I think that it can make our communities better. Our communities suffer from mental health. Our communities suffer down in, in Blanchard and up in um, Priest Lake. Those are areas where people are basically in a extreme rural area. Kids can't get to the um, things that they need to get to. Adults can't get there. There, where's the help? I had no idea uh, until today, finding out these um, listening to these chats. You find out so much information and where one can find help. It's a community. We are a county and we should work together. And, and what better place to have that than here in a business meeting to discuss how our neighbors are doing or what our neighbors need, what could better us as a county? It's super important and I'm really sad that um, Steve, you know, isn't here to, to be a part of that community. I think we need to emphasize that more. Um, one other thing, I was just gonna reiterate that a lot of people didn't know about a caucus this year. They had, like, I went to church on Sunday and I spoke to one of the elders of our, of our church and he's like, well, I heard something about that. Um, I had to reiterate, that is March second. At a specific time for our area, it's from eleven AM until twelve thirty. It's, it's something that should be um, put out there. And then to know that also the primary still will be held. And here we go. I appreciate your time and thank you for the meetings and chats that you do have. And I wish that you, you personally would join them. It's a wealth of information and you could be a better service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logue. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not how we operate at a business meeting. It is in our code and it's modeled after the Legislature of Idaho. Our next speaker is Ms. Amy Lunsford.
Good morning, Amy Lunsford. For the record, I do live in Bonner County. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my concern is about planning. I recently read an article where, in the Daily Bee, and they stated that our planning department was going to begin aerial surveillance of the citizens of Bonner County to find people who have not properly pulled permits and then send them out violations. I want to know how you guys plan on buying on the citizens of Bonner County. Um, and I think what's happening in planning is the business of Bonner County and I say a lot of people don't probably understand who live out in the county that if they build a house in the middle of forty acres, that's their private space. They may have pulled a permit for their home. But do not realize that if they add a deck, if they build a chicken coop, that that could be a permit violation. They could get a letter apparently in the mail stating that they have violated the permit violation and and then you're going to compound that with fees and whatever. So my concern is is, again, I feel like this is an overstep of government. I think our permits are already way out of control for the everyday residential person. Um, and it's also upsetting that you want to utilize technology to spy on the everyday taxpayer. But yet, we have a huge dock system going in at the end of Trestle Creek that could destroy hundreds of native species. It just doesn't make sense to me. So if you guys could please make an agenda item where you can explain this on it would be a big help to myself and a lot of other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lunsford. That completes the people who have signed up. And it is ten eighteen and we will it is ten eighteen and we will now recess for five minutes and then we will proceed into executive session upstairs.
One moment, my name is on the public comment list. Could you tell me which ordinance says you can deny me public comment?
I'm assigned for public
I signed up.
Why, why were we skipped, Luke?
I signed up, Luke.
All right, we'll just add that
Another tyrant act. Tyrant.
What a, what a big